Continue. So with that, item three, approval of minutes. I ask for a recommend emotion to approve the following minutes. Thank you. This Betty Ann and Augie on the second. Are there any questions on the minutes that are listed from December 18? Seeing none, uh, voice vote, please.
Just Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt, you would have to abstain.
Abstain.
Thank you. Stention noted. Ms. Johnson.
Abstain.
You've stention noted. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. McVeigh?
Yes.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnike?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving into item four, report of the superintendent. Dr. Melissa McCooly, to your floor.
Thank you. I have a couple of things to announce here, then I have a short presentation. So first and foremost, um, we are very excited to now formally be an Ocean County College Satellite Location. So we will be having, um, some courses put together and some programs that'll be sent out to the public, and they can actually take the courses right here on our campus. So we're really happy for that opportunity. The Twilight Program and our ESS program is going very well. That's our Effective School Solutions. That was the grant that was written for the next couple of years. Our Twilight Program is growing. It starts at 2:15 every day. Um, students that were typically not coming to school at all, or have school phobia are now coming to school and getting all of their coursework done. So we're really thrilled with that. And the second piece of that now is in place where they're having, um, a counselor sit with them for the first forty-five minutes of the program. So they're getting the mental health that they need from those counselors. And those counselors are also now available during the day to see groups of students with parent permission, of course. Some of us will be participating in Texpo this week, and we're happy to go take some of those courses and learn some more about technology that we can bring back to our school district. And the last thing I have is a very short presentation, so I'm just gonna go over to the podium. All right, so as you know, um, I've been here now since 2018, and I take great pride in Pinelands. I have since I graduated from here. I think the staff here is second to none. The students are amazing. The programs we have there are really, um, there's something for everyone here now, and we've built them over the years. And of course, we have a wonderful Board of Education that is extremely supportive. And it's very disheartening and upsetting to me when things are out there about Pinelands in any type of negative light. And this happened recently, and I'd like to kind of address the situation and put some truth to the situation. I know that there was a discussion last week with the Little Lake Harbor Board of Education regarding the sixth grade promotion ceremony. And I had some phone calls and some correspondence from the staff members at Little Lake that were very upset because they knew some of the information was just not true. So I'd like to go over that at this point. We've had the promotion ceremony here for sixth grade at Pinelands for the last couple of years. And Mr. Denning reached out to me in December. He also copied Mr. Henderson, and he asked if he could once again have the promotion ceremony here. You'll see by this email, I responded to him. I had Mr. Henderson copied as well, and I copied President McVeigh at the time, and basically said, of course, you can have it here. Please note graduation may change because they tried to piggyback that date with our graduation because of the setup. And that there was a facilities use form attached, and the regulation was also attached with any corresponding costs. I did not receive an email back from this correspondence from December fifteenth of 2023. Just a reminder for the board and the community that in April of 2022, the Little Lake Harbor voted to not have many of the shared services that we had in place, including facilities and technology. They wanted to focus solely on Little Lake and have those positions completely at Little Lake, which was their prerogative. Some of the things that were said during their meeting, they asked if the policy had been in place in a long time. I believe they were referring to our use of facilities. It was answered that it was put in place in July, and then it was corrected that, no, it was August. So it was implied that we put a new policy in place in Pinelands in August. The next thing they discussed was, we had it there before, meaning the promotion ceremony, how much did it cost? And they responded, zero, nothing. It costs Little Lake absolutely nothing to have promotion ceremony here. And then this year, there was going to be a cost. Yes, there was. So they said it's unfortunate for the kids here at Little Lake and the families, and they're gonna make it special there regardless. So I'd like to comment on some of these things that were said. Policy seven one five zero of use of facilities is not new. It was in existence at least since nineteen eighty, I can look back and say. It is also a mandatory policy that every school district has to have. A little side note, since July first of 2023, we have roughly adopted, revised, or abolished one hundred and thirty policies. Twenty-one are actually being adopted tonight. So these are not something that we're doing, um, in isolation. This is something we're doing on an ongoing basis to update our policies, regulations, and mandates, to align with Strauss S. May's recommendations, and to align with the NJ Department of Education. Here are some samples of policies that we've had in the past for use of facilities. And you can see, number one, how many times these are revised because costs of things are going up. They don't stay the same. So you can see on the left-hand side at the bottom, this was just a draft of how to change some of these. This is before I even came to Pinelands. And there have been many revisions. You can see two thousand twenty, two thousand and three, two thousand and five, two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and eighteen. How many times this policy was revised based on costs going up to school districts? At the very top, where the red arrow is, you'll see that the Board of Education has the right to waive some of these fees and can and has in many cases. And each use of facilities is handled on an individual basis. There's many things to take into consideration. And then there's also the code, which cites why you have to have this policy and a use of facilities regulation. So the other thing that was mentioned, and that was very, um, dramatically spoken about at their meeting, was that they have paid zero in the past. They have not paid zero in the past for their promotion ceremony. These are copies, and I have the actual invoices, of invoices that were sent from Pinelands to Little Lake Harbor, and they paid for the, their portion of the use of facilities for the promotion ceremony. For example, we have to rent an ADA compliant ramp for the ceremony. We have one indoor, we have one outside, if we're gonna have it there. There's a cost to that. They paid half, which was about fourteen hundred dollars. The chairs that we have to rent for outside, there's a cost to that. They paid five hundred dollars for that. I'm sorry, the six twenty-five was the chairs. Technology services were used by them to have the promotion ceremony inside, which they did last year. They had to pay for two of our techs to actually run the program. That was three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. And then lastly, Darren Hickman came to do sound for us for the tune of seven hundred dollars for graduation, and he charged five hundred dollars to Little Lake Harbor to do that. Um, uh, he did the lighting, excuse me, for that promotion ceremony. The bottom line is, this was never free. They never not paid for promotion ceremony. There has always been a cost, and this is the verification of that. This is the form that's filled out when anyone wants to do a use of facilities. This form has been on our website since 2012. The same form is filled out, it's submitted, it's guys, it goes through the correct channels, and then ultimately it's approved by the Board of Education. So what would the total cost be if Little Lake Harbor or someone wanted to use the facility? We can look on the left-hand side, towards the bottom. If they wanted to use the outside field for their promotion ceremony, and they didn't want to use any of our ramps, any of our chairs, they wanted to bring all their own things in, it's two hundred dollars. And what that cost is our maintenance and facilities, any of the work they need to do to get that set up. If they wanna have it in our gymnasium because it may rain, and they wanna have it in there for some reason, it's three hundred dollars. So that would be the cost to use the facilities. Once again, that fee can be waived once they fill the form out. The form has never been filled out. We've never given a quote or any type of discussion of what it would cost them. If they share the cost that we're already paying for our graduation ceremony, it saves both school districts money. We have to set up for graduation regardless. So Little Lake Harbor shared half the cost with us in the past because we're paying it regardless. They would have to pay it either way as well. If they were gonna use the facilities, they still need to have the ramp, they still need to have chairs. So it wouldn't make sense for us to do it twice, to set everything up, pay for it, take it down, and then set it up the very next day again. So it's a savings to both districts. If they did not wanna share those costs with us and take everything down and bring in their own materials for some reason, it would cost them two hundred dollars. So there's always been a cost for the sixth grade promotion ceremony. Even when it was solely at Little Lake Harbor, I was the superintendent, there was always a cost to have promotion, to rent chairs, to get flowers, if you needed to bring in, um, any type of handicap compliant ramps or anything of that nature, there's a cost to rent those things. They kept speaking about not budgeting for this and not having the money. I don't know why an item wouldn't be budgeted for if it's a reoccurring, ongoing cost every year. So the bottom line, it's essential to have open communication, which everyone in the world has my cell phone number and my email address. It's essential to have this open communication to avoid misinformation. All of our policies and regulations are online. It's clear to see the cost of this, which would have been two hundred dollars to use our facilities. And, um, it is very disheartening when this type of communication happens without any kind of backup or verification, and in my opinion, for the sole purpose of making our school district look bad, and it could have absolutely been avoided. So that is what I have in regards to the promotion ceremony and use of facilities. And that's all I have for an update this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McCooly. Uh, it is disheartening that this presentation had to be given, you know, because that misinformation spewed a lot of social media negativity, which it shouldn't exist. We've got sending districts, we're all one community, and it's just a shame that it had to come to that. So hopefully going forward, um, those things don't happen. You know, one of the coolest things in that policy, seven five one zero, one of the coolest lines, you mentioned it, but I'm gonna just say it again. "The Board of Education by majority vote reserves the right to relax, waive, or increase fees due to unforeseen, unmitigated circumstances, special circumstances." So yeah, this is only January. I'm sure the form would have been submitted. And coming in front of this board, I can only surmise that if we were asked to waive two to three hundred dollars, I'm like, I, uh, listen, I bet you it gets waived. But it's just a shame that that misinformation had to be fed out so negatively. Uh, thanks, Doc. I was getting to that piece. That was the first time I did this. Uh, thanks. Hey, Johanna, how are you? What's up? Yo.
Okay. Hi, everybody. So as updates say, for the nineteenth year in a row, the Pilots Drama Program won gold in the annual Stand Governor's Award Theater Competition. Many thespians won individual awards, including Katrina Erden, Morgan Torgasso, Evan Wykoff, and Julia Moran. So congratulations. Following that, the Pilots thespian Stage Crew took first place overall at New Jersey State thespian Festival in the first annual Tech Olympics. The High School JAG Program hosted a cook drive to help the community. There, they received numerous donations, including coats, gloves, hats, scarves, and blankets. The National Honor Society inducted many juniors and seniors at the introduction night this past Thursday. The candidates all completed outstanding volunteer work of fifty-plus hours, each to be accepted. Miss Willscroft Senior ELA seniors were given the opportunity to tour Eastern State Penitentiary last week as part of their justice lesson after reading Twelve Angry Men and the Shawshank, I'm sorry, Shawshank Redemption. SBIS hosted a challenge day in the gym where students were able to inspire each other in an encouraging environment to tear down the walls of separation, therefore trying to increase our positive school environment. And lastly, as a reminder, the Extended Learning Program is still offering free SAT prep classes on school, uh, after school on Mondays. The monthly calendar is posted on our school website. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, Johanna. As much as I wanna absolutely congratulate the thespians, an hour later, I believe we have a, uh, presentation at this point. Mr. Miller, Mr. DeFrancia, do I see you sneaking around the corner?
Yep.
You did.
I do, I did.
You did.
Done.
All right. Uh, good evening, members of the board and Pilots administrators, fellow colleagues, community members, uh, and parents. For those of you that do not know who I am, I'm Chuck Miller, the theater director of the Pilots Regional High School. This is Mr. Bart DeFrancia, the assistant director and our junior high, uh, director, and I'm here tonight with a special presentation for the board and the community at large. Uh, as many of you know, every so often, we as a department like to take the opportunity to have you, the stakeholders, uh, meet our students and help celebrate, uh, their success. So our first order of business is the, uh, Speech and Theater Association of New Jersey's Governor's Award Theater Competition. As many of you know, the Governor's Award is the highest honor that a student or educator may receive in education in the state of New Jersey, and earning one is quite difficult. As a department, we have been attending this event for the better part of thirty years, ever since we were in high school back in nineteen something. And, uh, this year's competition held, yes, the first Bush was there, yes. Um, this year, the competition hosted thirty-four schools and over six hundred students vying for the coveted award. I wanna invite our stand team to come up, uh, over here as I, uh, recognize you guys today. Please, as you can see, um, behind you, those are the, that's the hall this year of the trophies and the Governor's Awards medals, uh, over there. Yeah, just go right there and stand over there, just say hello. Face the table, face the table, face the table. Good job. It's not a lineup, guys, just enjoy. Uh, as stated, uh, by Johanna, thank you so much. I'm happy to report that for the nineteenth consecutive year and the twenty-second overall, our theater department has won multiple Governor's Awards at this competition. Uh, this year, we took eleven final placements, won two of the six Governor's Awards categories, and also won the Best Actress Governor's Award, uh, given to the Best Actress of the Scene Category Finals. Our first place winners this year were Evan Wykoff in the category of comedic monologue. Katrina Erden and Morgan Torgasso for dramatic pairs.
Student, students, raise your hands so we can see who you are.
Yeah.
Say hi.
Yes.
I don't wanna guess.
And Julia Moran as Best Actress. Uh, this is also the second Governor's Award in three years for Katrina in dramatic pairs, and the second consecutive Governor's Award for Julia, who won last year's comedic monologue and placed second this year. Our competition team worked countless hours, giving up many days during their Christmas break and, uh, to rehearse late into the night, uh, on many occasions, including the entire week leading up to the competition, which is held at Montclair State University. These students met at five fifteen in the morning on the day of the event. It did not return till eight thirty PM of the competition, but at the end, it was all worth it. Please let me recognize all of our trophy winners and competitors who went above and beyond this year. Uh, for contrasting monologues, our finalist was Tori Beamer in, yes, in dramatic monologue Sage Target won third place, and Summer Hudeck was a finalist. In improvisational pairs, Sage Target and Julia Moran won third place. And Liam Silk and John Allen were finalists. In the scene category, Morgan Torgasso, Katrina Erden, Matthew Leahy, Sawyer Dykman, Kelly Tucker, and Julia Moran placed fifth with a play called Foul Play, which is a detective noir parody. This is the scene for which Julia won the Best Actress Award. In comedic pairs, Summer Hudeck and Evan Wykoff won second place. Uh, and as, as, as was said before, dramatic pairs, Katrina Erden and Morgan Torgasso won first place. And in comedic monologue, we swept the category with a first, second, and third place. Winners Evan Wykoff, Julia Moran, and Sage Target respectively. Please, and please indulge me for just a moment. I recognize the entire team for all their hard work. We have Isabella Allen, Julia Snyder, James Allen, John Allen. It's a lot of Allens. Tori, oh, we're in Tucker, I forgot, sorry. Uh, Tori Beamer, Sawyer Dykman, Summer Hudeck, Katrina Erden, Gabriela Garcia, Maddy Hasher, Matthew Leahy, Ava Lubacheski, Brielle Merklin, Aubrey Miller, Bridget Stepnowski, Julia Moran, Hope Shirt and Lee, Liam Silk, Ashley Slinchak, Summer Sprague, Savannah Stankowski, Sage Target, uh, Sage Target, Morgan Torgasso, Kelly Tucker, Ava Way, and Evan Wykoff for the high school. And we even had a few, uh, junior high competitors this year. Sophia DeFrancia, Robert Capriglione, Nick Capriati, Emily Rocheski, Ava Tennis, and Natalie Pascal, the twenty twenty-four Stand Competition Team. All right. Thank you so much. Uh, and if that wasn't enough, and if that wasn't enough, the very next weekend, uh, we attended the New Jersey State thespian Festival. Now, each state in America and other parts of the world hold their own thespian festival weekend. And participants who rank superior in select categories earn the opportunity to compete and perform at the National Conference in Indiana each summer. Other categories, uh, uh, in New Jersey state categories, sorry, summer national categories, summer state categories. At this event, over fifty schools attended with over a thousand students, uh, from the event all over the state. This year, I'm pleased to report, and this one is a fun one. Guys, ready? Our stage crew took home first prize and the Golden Wrench, right there. Come on, stage crew, get up here. Now, this, they took first prize and the Golden Wrench. By the way, it's not plastic, it's heavy, it's real. Like, you could do power lines with that thing, yeah? Um, they had to compete. This is, uh, Ariana Goldberg, Cadence McDeecker, Riley Martin, Matty Young, and Maggie Kramer. They could, this is the, they competed in five events, which is a scene change, prop table, quick change, mic swap, and our favorite, uh, which we all watched this one, Theater Chaos, where they're given a problem that they don't know what the problem is, and they have to go behind Lake Distarp and find all the pieces and solve the problem as fast as you can. They were the fastest time of all fifty schools, uh, in, uh, the competition. So we are so honored to have our stage crew get the recognition they finally deserve. So let's hear it for the stage crew again. Oh, nice.
Oh, good.
Um, our performance, uh, state superior rankings, and you're gonna see them again in just a few minutes, uh, went to improvisational pairs Julia Moran and Sage Target. And our national category superiors went to Kelly Tucker and Summer Hudeck in the category of musical theater solo. But the one that is, uh, a lot of fun for us for tonight is something fully special for the community is our group musical theater performance of, it's a, a number called Thirty-Eight Planes from the show Come From Away, which is a show about what happens to the planes that were diverted during nine eleven. And sorry, only three schools ranked superior, uh, in the entire competition, and we were one of them. Uh, what I'd like to do now is invite the board to come join the audience, and we're gonna perform that number for you tonight, right here. So if you guys wouldn't mind coming down here, we're gonna set ourselves up, and we're gonna perform the number Thirty-Eight Planes from the show Come From Away. It's an interactive piece tonight. That number was choreographed by Mrs. Tonya De Francia. And under the musical, and under the musical direction of Miss Emily Chance. Now, uh, to have a little more fun with the board, if you guys don't mind, I hope you'll help us out. We did not attend the second day of our, uh, Thespian Festival and so therefore we missed the award ceremony. Luckily, I have them here tonight. So if you'd be so kind to help us, the medals are here and you can help us medal our children and place the medals around there. Next for the Thespian Festival, feel free to join us, uh, under this one right here. Um, if they're right here on the table on the left, you'll see the list of the group musical theater. There's sixteen of them. Feel free to come over and grab one and we're going to just give their kids their medals tonight. Since we missed that ceremony, we figured it'd be a wonderful thing for them to receive in a more formal setting in front of the parents. You guys can actually see some of the hard work that they do. Uh, alright, can you guys get over there? Perfect. You guys could turn around so they can get you and then turn around there. Awesome. We'll start with the group musical theater if that's alright. Uh, first, uh, our first right here, Miss Betty McVay is right here, Miss Summer Hudak, right here. You wanna grab her? Perfect. Oh, that's a different one. Yeah, that's okay. We have plenty of them. Just grab it. It doesn't matter. There's plenty of them on the table. Yep. Tori Beamer. Thank you so much. Callie Tucker. Sage Target. Julia Snyder. Bridget Stepnowski. Oh, yeah. James Allen. John Allen. Avon Kane. Julia Moore. Morgan Torgasso. Ava Lubacheski. Katrina Erden. Summer Sprague. Hope Shirt and Lee. And Ashley Slinchack. Your musical theater superior medalists of twenty twenty four during the Thespian Festival. Guys, you wanna turn around? Maybe your parents wanna get a picture real fast. Wonderful. Awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, we also have the medals for our stage crew who won their, uh, medals right there. So we invite the crew back up real fast. Have you guys, you guys did a great job, by the way, uh, with the, uh, the handing out of the medals. Alright. Alright, we have, uh, where, where are we? We'll start with this. Okay, great. We have Maggie Kramer. We have Cadence McDeemer. Matty Young. Ariana Goldberg. And Riley Martin. The winners of the Golden Wrench.
That was the solution he had to figure out.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then, uh, just quickly, we have a few more if the four of you wanna come out. Uh, for our improvisational pairs Julia Moore and Sage Target. You guys could come out here. And our national, uh, category musical soloists, Callie Tucker and Summer Hudak. Let me please also recognize the staff who work so hard, giving up their countless hours and their time to coach, direct, helping, uh, select the right pieces for our students and chaperoning these events. Mr. Barton Francia. Mrs. Tonya De Francia. Miss Cameron Barr. Emily Chance. Miss Jordan Barr and Mr. Carter Mathis. Uh, in closing, let me just, uh, thank you all for the following. Uh, thank you all for the time and the opportunity to share all this with you. Uh, in our current climate today, it's always good and necessary to remember why we are all here. Why you serve, why we teach, why parents support, why community attends performances and why we are here tonight. Simply put, we are here for the kids. We are here for them because they need us. We are here because like me, when I was a student here, they need adults to guide them, to challenge them, to help them grow into the productive, respectful citizens that we hope they turn out to be. My experience with theater education during high school was so important to me and my development that I swore if ever had the opportunity to teach, I would build a program for which kids in the community at large could be proud. A program that is always striving and learning and always changing with one thing in mind, the needs of our students who work tirelessly tirelessly and commit to something for which they see as bigger than themselves. Because the memories and bonds they make will last a lifetime. The lessons they learn will follow them for years and years. And having been in this district since two thousand two, minus a small teeny, we need three year hiatus somewhere else. But having been in the district since two thousand two, I can attest from the countless encounters that we have had with our alumni, many of whom we are still within contact today. I came back to Pine Lands because it's a very special place with a special community. And we thank you and thank you, our administration and our staff and our community members for your continued, ongoing and future support. And we hope that we'll see all of you at The Little Mermaid opening February twenty ninth through March ninth. And thank you all for helping celebrate the success of our students. Thank you. Chuck, Bart, you know, year after year after year, you continue with the many different faces that come before you to perform, to win at that state level. And it's just, it's absolutely bleep, bleep, bleep awesome to, uh, to see. So with that, uh, the Pine Lands Regional Board of Education is going to be the proclamation. Hold one moment, please. Whereas on this day, Monday, January twenty second, twenty twenty four, the Pine Lands Board of Education has declared formal recognition to praise the Pine Lands Regional Thespians. So our school and community can, can acknowledge the contributions made by our Pine Lands Thespians past and present. And whereas, while the Pine Lands Theater Department began since the district's inception, the Pine Lands Regional Thespians were established in nineteen eighty eight. And whereas the Pine Lands Regional Board of Education embraces the goal of education and growth through the arts. And you'll teach me this, this breathing technique. And whereas the Pine Lands Regional Thespians in the Drama Department is recognized for its continued service to the community by way of their annual plays, musicals, school outreach, volunteerism and various interscholastic and competitive opportunities for student growth. And whereas Pine Lands Regional School District takes pride in its Thespians, which rank among the state's best in key achievements, including over one hundred Governor's Award medals earned by both students and staff and countless awardees in the hundreds from the Speech and Theater Association of New Jersey. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Pine Lands Regional School District and Board of Education does hereby recognize the Pine Lands Regional Thespians and the staff and volunteers who have contributed and continue to contribute to the outstanding success of the Pine Lands Thespians. And be it further resolved that the Pine Lands Regional School District and Board of Education commits to the continued support and encouragement of the students and staff contributing. Thespians, uh, contributing to the Pine Lands Thespians urges the local communities, Bass River, Eagleswood, Little Egg Harbor and Tuckerton to work with their local Boards of Education and Public Service Staff toward the advancement of the theater arts in their children's education. Thank you, Chuck, Bart. Okay, moving into our next part of our business, we're going into our work session. I'm going to get to that, Spuddy. I'm going to stare. But thank you, cuz I probably would have forgotten. Uh, anyway, prior to going into, uh, the work session, if anyone cares to, um, excuse themselves for homework, studies, things of that nature, um, you may leave at this time or you can stay and sit through the rest of our, uh, business. You're more than welcome to. We'll give you a few moments to exit and then we will continue. Catch my breath. Um, at this time, let's take a two minute recess. So if anyone needs to use the restroom as well, they're located in the back right portion of the, uh, media center and we're going to two minutes.
Get your stuff.
Thank you.
You know, you know.
God, of course.
That's awesome. Mr. De Francia deserves most of the credit. Well, the girls are very talented though. You got that too. You're very welcome.
Yeah, that was awesome.
I wasn't sure if you were and that's why I read it so many times.
And I'm doing that actually. It's a lot of practice. I'm interested in working with a really trashy detective.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Blows me away.
Did you do it? Oh, wow. Oh, well, doesn't matter.
Has this been updated for the snow day already?
Yes. Wow. Yeah, that was impressive. Where did it commence?
We have two on there, um, Spuddy. One calendar is the update to add another day at the end of the year.
Oh, two off.
Yes, and then the other, no, the, the, the calendar we're currently in had to be updated to add that day at the end of the year. And then we have next year's calendar on there.
Got you.
Yeah.
So it's added on the end?
Yes. We're able to do that now because we do, um, try to graduation at Saint Francis and we can change.
They're flexible. Isn't that awesome?
Yeah, it's better.
Oh, no, gosh.
Well, no, I just horrified that that's the Labor Day on the second. Very cool. That was fun.
Of course, your biggest interest is what happens.
Christmas is a big deal. And you're not gonna let us off the date for Christmas Eve, but how do you get everything done? It's crazy.
Alright, folks, I think our two minutes has succeeded. Uh, as we move into our work session portion of our agenda, we're going to start with the President's Update. That would be me. So I just have a couple of things. Um, we had a question sent via website to our board. The question states, and we like to answer, answer these to those who do, uh, reach out to us via the website. Do members of the Board of Education have a social media policy? Are there members or all members, excuse me, are new members or all members trained on the proper protocols of school threats? Are members trained in the process of HIB investigations? Are members trained in privacy rights of students and staff? So one question, four parts. Okay. So, uh, to answer that question, um, yes. All board members, uh, are trained and I'll have, uh, the doc follow up with a couple of things if I miss. But, uh, in, in your, in our first year, we're remanded by this, by the, uh, School Boards Association for first year, uh, training. And in that training, you learn pretty much all the ins and outs of board, board decorum, um, code of ethics, uh, things just to kinda get you rolling. Um, then in year two, you get into governance and more updates. Year three, there's another, uh, small piece that you do and all the while there's, um, the conference that we go to and other educational pieces to continue to make us as, um, updated on this and trained to do the best that we can be. And then those who are returning for a second term, uh, it's just more advanced, uh, governance and things of that nature. So to answer the question, uh, yes, we are ongoing, uh, the training that, that continues. Uh, now doc, uh, if we look at, uh, you know, specific policies to those like, uh, school threats or, um, HIB investigations, I think that all falls under kinda some of the confidentiality things and things that you guys deal with. You know, the administrators more than what the board has to do with.
So there is a, a board member orientation training policy at zero one four four and it outlines exactly what you said about taking governance one. Um, having the board review all of the policies that are on our website and knowing those rules and regulations. There's a lot about confidentiality and student rights on that. And then the other thing that you mentioned, we do have a school threat assessment policy that's mandated. It's two, four, one, nine. That deals with school threat assessment teams. The regulation that coincides with that discusses the threshold for when you have to, um, handle something internally with your resource officer or reach out to law enforcement. And then they take it from there. So it is outlined in the regulation.
Great. Okay. Uh, second piece of business I have, a little update, uh, more of an educational piece for the board. Uh, recently I received an email, uh, from a sitting board member in regards to another sitting board member, um, absences of scheduled board meetings. So I wanna read the policy and then I'm gonna speak just for a second on absences of a board member and, and being removed or potentially removed from the board. Policy zero, one, four, five, board member resignation and removal. The membership of the Board of Education. The membership of the Board of Education. Members shall terminate immediately, oh, the membership of Board of Education members shall terminate immediately upon the secession of the members' bona fide residence. I'm going to kind of cut these all off without reading each statute that it falls under. The members' election or appointment to office of mayor or member of the governing body of Little Egg Harbor. The members' disqualification from voting, and the member falsely affirms or declares that he or she is not disqualified as a voter pursuant to NJSA 194-1. And then the removal of a member by the Commissioner of Education or calls for it. So one of the things I want to point out, and you can read, I can share this with all of my board members in the email, you can read this policy 0145. A member who fails to attend three consecutive meetings of the board without good cause, without good cause, may, not must, may be removed from office on the affirmative votes by majority of the remaining board members, provided that the member's removal was proposed at the immediately previous board meeting and notice of the proposal, proposed removal was given to the affected member at least forty-eight hours in advance of meeting at which the vote will be taken. So the dates in question, there was a couple of special meetings within that cycle, and they do not constitute as our scheduled monthly meetings. So the absence of missing three meetings does not qualify, meet the criteria for potential removal from the board. Anytime there's a question that comes up regarding policy, board members, I would hope that we all have our facts in line, or at least ask to have them in line and review, not just to auto, this person should be removed because they missed three meetings. So it's an educational piece, 0145 is a friendly little helper. That's all I have.
Can I comment on that?
Um, very soon. Uh, one moment. Just want to reset my computer. Give me one moment. New technology, new board docs. So my presentation is complete. Seriously. As we move into new business, there will be an area shortly for residents' form on agenda items only, and then later in the meeting, there'll be a space for residents' form on any topic. So since that fell under new business, in item seven, you'll be able to come to the podium. When we get into board forum. And we're going to discuss the selection of a new board member. I guess under new business, if I wanted to comment through board forum, we can continue with board forum on agenda items. Or new business, so any, any commonality. So at this point, Stephanie?
I was the one that asked for Mrs. Martin's attendance record, and it wasn't provided to me. I was told I could look for it by the business administrator, so I went back and looked at the past year. In September, Ms. Martin's only attended one meeting. So I thought that was a concern for the Bass River residents, and it's important to have a nine-member board. So that's why I emailed the president asking if that could be a discussion as far as taking attendance seriously for our school community.
Interesting.
Yes, Speddy.
Thank you. Because I was president during most of that time, and we had a few meetings that we had to change times that interfered with Ms. Martin's work schedule. And I even remember, I want to say it was maybe October, November, Ms. Martin asked me to clarify why it was she had missed the meetings, and I did that in open session at a board meeting. So she had just cause for missing
those meetings. Work is just cause, even though the minutes, the meetings are determined a year in advance.
Each board member, please.
I have the floor. I am talking. Thank you. So to finish up. Finish up what I was saying. I would just let all our board members and the public know that Ms. Martin missed those meetings because the times had been changed and the dates had been changed, and her work schedule did not allow her to make those meetings. And I'm so glad you're here tonight. Thank you.
I'm just saying, just cause is not defined in the policy, and just cause work is not a just cause. A medical issue, yes. Death in the family, maybe one meeting. But the schedules out there for the year in advance, and I feel like each member should make adjustments accordingly.
Mr. President, was how many meetings? Weren't they special, a couple of special meetings?
Yes, I have the dates right in front of us. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna leave it at this because I don't want to go back and forth. And so here's, here's the deal.
Well, I didn't know that because the business administrator isn't answering my questions. So
But the president.
He didn't answer it either.
I said I would look into it, and then I'm going to give you the answers, and I gave you the answer.
And Mr. President, if I could just interrupt, I would just ask board members, it's generally not appropriate to discuss work performance that is specifically named individuals unless they've been rice noticed. So I would just caution board members that could create an issue for you, both from an ethical standpoint as well as from a legal standpoint under the Open Public Means Act.
So she's not an employee.
Thank you, Will.
Business administrator is.
Oh, that, that, okay.
And also, I would, I would just also, just the way just cause is a very flexible definition under that statute. With the Commissioner of Education, I would also suggest to you that a Board of Education only exists from reorganization to reorganization. So I don't know if there'd be a carryover of any missed meetings that would actually count. You've only had two meetings. When you had three meetings, reorg, the special meeting, and now this is your third meeting of the year.
Anyway, I'm sure all of us make sacrifices to be here on the schedule that that takes place. And I know all of our intent is to be here to serve, and for the the absence with just cause, I don't need a definition for it. I don't think it even needs a definition for it. We have lives to lead outside of here, but we are all committed to serving our community. And that's what I'm going to say about it. It's closed. Moving on into new business, we have discussions for our vacant seat. We're going to discuss this. Now.
Yeah. Do you want to read the section of the policy that's
And I'll start with this prior to you finding the actual policy.
Don't be read the part that we're doing.
Okay, perfect. No, go right ahead.
All right, so. In according, in considering candidates who have expressed an interest in a vacancy, the Board of Education may interview candidates in public or executive. The board must vote to appoint a candidate to a vacancy in public session, and there shall be no decision made in executive session. In the event interviews are conducted in executive session, board members in the public session nomination and voting process shall express their opinion in support of their vote, so the public can witness any deliberation, policy formulation, and other decision-making process of the board. A roll call vote will be conducted on candidates in order the candidates were nominated with a second. If there are two or more vacancies, each, we don't, that doesn't apply.
Questions, concerns, topics of, we had five wonderful candidates, all very well spoken, vast experiences in many different fields. There are some factors I think that we need to consider. We have one of the candidates who unsuccessfully went through election. Three ran for two seats. The winning candidate was unable to meet obligations through the state. And this person does go to the forefront in my eyes as being the one who went through the process to run. The other four candidates, gosh, so difficult, fantastic. I think they could bring a lot to the seat. I would encourage those four to run for this, run for the seat and, and have the voters go through that process, but knowing that this, one of the fifth candidate did do that process. I'm leaning towards him. I could, I could say names, right? That's where in public, so that's John Malone. You know, they're all, nothing from the floor, please. You want to ask a question? I'll ask a question. I'll give you an answer. You'll get provided answer. There's nothing that's a setup. He ran for the board. So that'll be, that'll be enough from the floor. Um, you know, I don't know if there's any other candidates. Am I the one making the the recommendation?
What's the procedure? As, as Dr. McCulley expressed, needs a nomination in the second, and you vote on, vote on in the order. But you can also just discuss before you nominate as well.
This is a point of discussion. I was particularly impressed with Ryan Vox, his answer to one of our questions about what it's one of the greatest challenges that are faced in 2024, and he spoke very well about social emotional health. I was impressed by his community involvement in coaching and athletics, the fact that he is a school counselor and has experience working in the past for child services. I mean, those are all admirable qualities and experiences.
I would second Ryan's nomination to be voted on.
Did you nominate?
Did you nominate, or are you going to nominate?
I did not.
Okay. Then I take that.
Like to, but I didn't know if we were moving to that point, or if we were discussing first. I don't know what the point of, what the order of things.
No, no, so I can officially nominate. I'm just, we're just opening for discussion. I mean, this is a new process for all of us because, you know, it's, it's, it's different than we filled two seats in the past. And then prior to that, I don't ever recall filling a seat in my prior fifteen years or having to need to fill a seat. So it's, it's still, it's a work in progress. So as we, as we go through this and the recommendations on the floor, then I will, I will recommend John Malone.
I'm not sure if because they ran, that should carry more weight than anything else. I, I I'd also like to say that this is a very difficult thing to do. Every candidate answered questions, and any one of them could fill the seat on this board and probably do an excellent job. I also liked Mr. Vox's answers. I also was impressed with Crystal Martin. Young, energetic, great vibe, had thought out answers to the questions. And I think that she would be a good addition to our board as well.
As long as we're discussing, I agree with everything said about the candidates so far. I would also like to add that Karen Rappallo, I very much liked her answer to your question about the mandate. I thought that was really, I thought her answers were very solid overall. Just like pointed that out.
Can we put them all on?
Lisa, this is Shannon. I, I concur with you. Karen's answers actually resonated with me along with Crystal's answers.
I found, well, man, I found all five were, were excellent candidates, but if you ask me my top three, or Lisa Stevens, Crystal Martin, and Mr. Malone, I mean, those are the ones right now I feel strongly about. They, they, each one of them brings something to the board. Mrs. Stevens, I mean, she, you know, she was city, city council. She was very much into volunteer work. Crystal Martin, she says she's a practicing intern. Right. And specializing in certain areas that would also be benefit. So right now, I'm just going to keep on listening to the rest of the board because I haven't made up my mind, but those are my threes.
I'd like to also add that it is extremely difficult. It definitely takes me back to when I submitted the letter to the board to fill the seat that Mr. Williams from Bass River. To fill his very big shoes. Every single candidate brought up the fact that communication and collaboration of all board members was vital, very important. They all brought up communication. And what really hit home with me was when asked about what is the biggest challenge that faces our students in 2024, they all circled around social media and bullying and putting the social emotional help of the students at the forefront. And every single one of them said that they were here for the kids, and that is the most important thing. So I, I respect your top three, Mr. Dalio. I can't, I, I have a top five right now. I, I can't, I couldn't, you know, so I'm going to continue to listen.
They were all great. They were.
Could we go take them one each month?
Yeah, I, I thought they were all great as well. If we had to start putting things down, I, Brian just missed part of Jeff's first question, I think, a little bit from the other four candidates when they answered that first question. And I know it was multi-part, but if we just had a, in my mind, start putting things, you know, I have Crystal, Karen, and John as my three.
Will, do you have any insight? Because so there's one nomination on the floor. I'm going to my is that there's going to be two more nominations.
Is there a nomination?
Well, there was a nomination. I don't believe, I don't believe it was seconded. It was not seconded, so it doesn't exist. Okay, thank, it doesn't exist. So we have candidates that, if there is a top three, and we vote, and remember whether nominated or seconded, and then we vote. Nothing precludes any one of us for voting yea or nay for multiple candidates, correct?
Well, no, actually, it's more along the lines of how you selected your officers, the way I read your bylaw, the way you select your officers for the Board of Education. Kaylee, I can tell you there are numerous bylaws out there to describe the process for filling the vacancy. I might be talking to your superintendent about maybe changing this process a little bit because I I've seen it done a little differently, but this is your process, and this has been in your policy manual for some time. And as we discussed before, you know, policies are ultimately subject to change on occasion. But that being said, I think that the way I read it when I got here and had read it before I came to the meeting was you take nominations, then you close nominations, and you vote on them in order, and the first nomination to receive the majority And the first nomination to receive majority of the remaining board members is selected as your, to fill the vacancy. So much like with a, a president election or vice president election, when there's more than one person nominated, you start with the first person who's nominated. That person would get five of the eight remaining votes. That seat filled. And that person would not get five of the eight receiving votes or does not, then you go to the next person. And again, I, I, Dr. McCulley, I think you had that policy out. You want to just read that section? So everyone, and I'm making you work tonight.
I believe we have.
And I greatly appreciate your patience, uh, in the audience as we go through this process.
Just read it. The last part about the vote nominations.
Okay. A roll call vote will be conducted on candidates in the order the candidates were nominated with a second. If there are two or more vacancies, we don't have that. The first candidate who receives the votes of majority of the remaining board members will be elected to the vacancy. In the event, no candidate receive a majority vote of the remaining board members, another election process shall be conducted between the two candidates receiving the higher number of votes.
Mister Donia, we have up to 65 days to fill the seat, correct?
65 days from the time it was vacant, which would be from reorganization.
January 3rd, correct?
That's when it was vacant because it didn't exist before that.
So we can always table this.
Uh, well, again, it, it, to, to, you, you can, uh, again, you have 65 days. You'd be surprised how quickly 65 days go by. And then it's eventually it's the executive county superintendent who would make that selection. And then again, at that, you know, without the seat filled, because you also want to get that person to be sworn in and that person will have to do the things that you need to do to get sworn in. You're familiar with that process. And you don't want to maybe have that wrinkle, if there is a wrinkle, stop that person from being seated because then all of a sudden the 65 days they have not been sworn in. So, um, while I, I believe you can, I do not caution about postponing something. And finally, I mean, you're an eight member board right now. I would, you know, I hope it's not the case, but it could be the case that you'll find yourself dealing with issues that are four to four. So having an even number of boards can be presented challenges. So the sooner that seat gets filled, it's probably the better for the Board of Education.
So, uh, Will, just per the policy, how it states, I'm going to ask the floor, the board for a nomination. And it gets seconded.
Yes.
Then I'm going to ask for another nomination and it gets seconded. In the order of the nominee, that is going to be the order of the vote, correct?
Yes.
Very good. At this point, I'm going to ask for a nomination for, uh, the candidate seat.
I nominate Ryan Vox.
I second that. Sorry, it was my computer just died right then. Sorry, my computer died. So we're, we have a new program. So it's just going to.
Tonight we started a new program, new, uh, board docs. So it's kind of a little learning, uh, curve for us as well in how we, uh, record our meeting.
That has been recorded.
Okay. You get the first, you get the nomination and the second.
Ms. Johnson, seconded.
I would like to nominate Crystal Martin.
I second it.
I did not. Correct.
Ms. Martin, that was you that seconded that, uh, the nomination for Crystal Martin.
I hear clicking is done. Okay. Uh, any other nominations from the floor?
I'd like to nominate Karen. I'd like to nominate Karen Rapallo.
We have three right now, right?
That needs a second.
I second.
Thank you, Shannon. Any other nominations from the floor? Going once, twice. Nominations are closed.
He just, he wants to know the people, I think, correct?
So in the nominated, in the nominated order, Ryan Vox was one, Crystal Martin was two, Karen Rapallo was three.
So we are going to vote on Ryan Vox.
Yes.
And that'll be a voice vote.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Yes or no? So the nomination is, I would suggest it's framed as a yes vote is to place Mr., I'm, I'm going to.
Mr. Or Mrs.?
The, the nominee in the seat. And if there are five enough votes, five or more votes that are yes, that terminates the process. You don't vote on the other individuals.
And we have one vote, correct?
You have one vote per nomination, yes.
One vote per nomination.
That's right.
So technically I could vote for each nominee.
And it goes around, each time it goes around.
Yes, but, but, but keep in mind, again, this is why I don't like this process. And this is why I'm, I'm making, if somebody gets five, you don't have the opportunity to vote on anyone who would follow that person. You just stop.
That's our policy. So we have to.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Can you abstain? Yeah, I, I, I guess, but the problem with that type of abstention is that, well, it, it, an abstention at that point is probably like a no vote to tell you the truth, because an abstention generally means if it's not based on a conflict basis, that means, uh, I don't really have a position. So I'll go with the majority. So the idea is that somebody would get the majority. It, it, it definitely doesn't get the majority. It's not going to work anyway. Does that make sense? Thank you. Now statute is a majority of the remaining members of the board statutory voting, uh, overrides Robert rules of order. It's actually, that's actually been interpreted by the Commissioner of Education. No, because again, I, again, uh, I'm not going to go back and forth, but I do, I do want to respect the question. And that is the statute itself provides, it has to be the majority of the remaining members of the board, not a majority of the quorum sitting and present. So in education law, whenever the statute says with regards to number of board members, either the full board or the remaining members, it means even if, even if somebody was absent tonight and there were only seven individuals, it would still require a five affirmative votes because there are still eight remaining members of board. And the commissioner's rule on that.
Thank you, Will. Let's move on with the vote.
Okay. So we are voting for.
Sir, we're going to continue our process. Sir. It's public content. It's public content, not cut, public comment.
Just do the roll call again.
So, so we are voting for Mr. Vox at this time. Ms. Betty?
Nay.
Mr. Bonneke?
No.
Mr. Dalio?
No.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Zimmerman?
No. What was that? Excuse me?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. McVeigh?
No.
Motion does not carry. Now we're going to vote for Crystal Martin. Ms. Betty?
No.
Mr. Bonneke?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. McVeigh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's it. That's it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Sting, and, um, I'll give you a second to, uh, do what you're going to do. And we're going to, uh, move into section six C for old business.
Do you also thank all the other candidates, please?
Absolutely. So, uh, as a group, sure, I mean, five wonderful candidates. We thank you for your time, your efforts to come out and sit in front of us and go through this process. And we certainly encourage, uh, you in November to, uh, those who are not the, the successful candidate to pursue that route if you're still interested come election time. I believe July you'll have to get your petition and, uh, fill that submitted to the county, how that works. So again, thank you all candidates. Um, so old business. Seeing no old business, we will move into section seven, residence forum. This is for agenda items only. Board policy numbers zero, one, six, seven encourages community participation in every meeting. However, the board requests that the public respect a three minute time limit when commenting on agenda items. Anyone from the floor? Come to the podium, state your name, your address and have at it.
Kelly Marr, 95, Halle Brook Drive. I believe from the meetings that I watched at home, um, there's a board member here that's been missed eight times. And I know there's two board members that are sitting on the seat right now where they've been through this before. And that board member had to leave because she missed too many days. And I know you both knew who I'm talking about.
Agenda item misses.
Yeah, but you brought it up.
Yeah, you brought it up.
Well, so I, I brought up the topic of the policy.
I would allow the three minutes to, to, to go.
Yeah, continue.
So my question is, is the board going to allow her to still sit on the board, missing at least eight meetings that I know of? And we've been through this once before. And there was a vote with maybe actually there's three people sitting on this board that was there and it was a woman and you all knew who I'm talking about. And she no longer was sitting on the board after that night of missing so many meetings. And actually, I don't know, even understand how when their other board seats were here, there was another board member that was never here at any of the meetings either, but she was allowed to sit on the computer and, uh, discuss why was she never here at the meetings and she still sat. So I'm just curious why this continues.
Thank you. Anywas, anyone else from the floor? Hello.
Good evening. Um, Laura Herbert, 205 Flax Court. And I'm here tonight as a community member and not a member of LEH Board of Ed. And I would respectfully ask if any of my questions couldn't be answered tonight, maybe they could be answered via email at a later time. I'd just like to comment a couple of things and then ask a couple of questions. In regards to the presentation Dr. McCulley did tonight, I think policy 7510, it may have been inverted on the, on the screen, but it was, it's 7510 because I did look it up prior to coming. And it's a shame that it was portrayed in a negative light because parents and staff questions shouldn't be perceived as negative. I just, I think the issue was the facility use fee and not the ancillary cost. Cause of course the, I think the neighboring board split the cost of this ceremony. But the facility use fee was the issue. And I don't believe that's been charged before. So it's good to know and learn that that could be waived. And, uh, I would encourage that board, this board to do that if in fact it became, um, a point of question again. And along those lines of collaboration, I guess you're voting on the calendar tonight. And I would encourage the sport also just to take a look or be open to amending the calendar, perhaps to add half days, perhaps conference days that I, I, I'm looking at the calendar. I don't see any conferences for Pinelands Regional, uh, either for the intermediate school or the high school. Um, and it would just make taxpayer, the stakeholder save money on busing. And I think that needs to, the discussion at least has to be, um, had between the two districts. Um, I have a couple of questions. And one pertains to the regulations that are on the agenda tonight. So many audited regulations. I take that to mean that they were reviewed and recommended, but it's come to my attention that regulations don't need to be voted upon. Is that correct? Because they're based on policies that are already in place. I'll put my email down in case you don't want to answer any questions now. And, uh, on the agenda as well, um, there's a billing item for almost $5,000. Is that a monthly fee for mental health services? And I wondered what they included. What those services were for under a Mr. Hands, I believe. Okay. And one final comment is that, um, I'm wondering why it's not live streamed anymore. Cause people like me or older people can't get out and, and, you know, come to the meeting sometime. And I think it was just a better way of getting to know the new board members, a better way of getting to know how everybody contributes to the meeting. And I would just encourage you to consider that again. And I want to thank you for all your service to the community as it is board member, uh, recognition tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's no one else from the floor. So let's give everyone an opportunity. Sure.
Hi, my name's Jen Dabella. I'm just here to speak about the drama and theater program. My daughter Ava is a junior and this is a little personal. So just bear with me. I want to thank the administration and the board over the years, how they have supported this program. You have no idea how important theater and this program is to our kids. In eighth grade, Ava joined drama with Mr. De Francia. COVID hit, my father passed away and she was crushed. I couldn't get her back to school. I couldn't get her to come in person. Mr. De Francia got my daughter back in school. The drama program got my daughter back in school. She struggled with anxiety and depression and, um, there are many days that the only reason she came to school was for stage crew or Mr. De Francia. She continues in the high school in the drama program. She was one of the students you saw up here tonight that went to Stange. So, um, there are many days that she still struggles. And she goes to school because of Mr. Miller, because of what Mr. Miller says, or because she can't miss drama, or she can't miss practice. Or because Mama Dee, you know, has them at rehearsal or, or Ms. Barr has to fit them or whatever the case may be. Or Miss Barr has to fit them or whatever the case may be. You have no idea the impact that these programs that we're providing our children. Have on not just the straight A, you know, scholar athlete. You just have no idea. So I want to thank the administration for always supporting. Our theater program. I want to thank the past board members and just I want you to remember when you're voting on these things. It's about our kids, all of our kids. And you need to be voting for our kids. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else from the floor?
Hi, I'm Crystal Martin, thirteen Vincent Court, Little Lake Harbor. Um, I just want to thank the board for putting your trust in me to fill the vacancy. Um, special thanks to Mrs. McVeigh for stating publicly and on the record um that I'm young and have a good vibe. Gonna ride that high for the rest of the week, so thank you.
Teenager in the seventies.
Thank you very much for that. Best part of my night, even if I, you know, did not get the vacancy, I was still gonna walk out of here extremely happy. Um, and I look forward to working with all of you for for this coming year. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Crystal. Anyone else from the floor? One, two. Kelly. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
I do have another question for the board. Um, is there a reason why we did get rid of? Virtually being able to watch this? Why do we always have to have where we have to put? Our address and our information down just to access it? It should be all public. We all pay taxes. We all should be able to watch it and not feel like you guys are hiding something because that's what it kind of feels like that you're taking it away. When we've had it all this time and it does help a lot of parents. So is that an answer? Can I get an answer to that question?
I'm going to provide a little bit of an answer. And maybe we'll go from there and I'll submit some more. I um, no, I'm not gonna close public forum because I I think this is the last one who's gonna come up since Kelly's did her second turn and Nono's came to the floor. But I think one of the things that happens when we're live streaming the meetings. Um, the social media negativity takes place. And I'd rather this interaction take place than interaction on social media that. Develops into such negativity that we're just screaming and we're just awful to each other. We shouldn't be. Meetings are once a month. We all have sacrificed. We all choose to do this. You know what the meetings are. You know what time they start. Everyone who said, well, we can't get there. We we have our own lives to lead. We have things that are going on. Just continue to make the, I encourage this interaction. You get your answer straight away.
No, you normally don't. This is the first.
You know what? Keep coming to the meetings, please, because this is the banter I'm talking about that goes out because you're gonna go back and maybe go on to social media and say, I did not answer your question. There are other questions I'm not gonna answer tonight, but this livestream one, that's the answer. That's a big part of it. It just spews negativity. You you know it does. You seen it. And I'm not going back and forth, but that's the answer why we don't livestream it anymore.
You can't even get our board members to come on a regular basis.
That'll be enough.
I'm just saying.
True.
They do come on a regular basis. We're not going back and forth. This is Kelly's time. I've answered your question. Do you have any other questions, Kelly?
It's not a good enough answer. There has to be a better answer to this. We shouldn't have to. We shouldn't have to make it like it's a privacy thing, like why can't we?
How private is it? Come to the meeting. It's open public. There's nothing to hide.
Yeah, but you're still asking for my information. Why do I have to ask for my information? Why can't I just be like, can I have? Like, why can't I just be there? Like, I'm still getting it, but I have to ask for it. Why?
It's just what the process is right now.
It's the same thing. You're still allowing us.
Thank you, Kelly. Your three minutes are over.
Can we at least put it on like an agenda to discuss it at a future executive session?
Absolutely. I would never not say that to that, but we'll talk about it.
I don't know the procedure to get that on like.
We'll have a discussion on it. Absolutely. Okay, Board Form. Excuse me, Residence Forum on Agenda Items is closed. We're going to go through the remainder of our meeting in the instructional side. Item eight. I ask for a motion to approve items eight A through eight G. As recommended by the superintendent.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions on items eight A through eight G? No questions? Roll call vote, please, Amanda?
Ms. Betty?
Um, I did have a question about the calendar. I'm sorry. There's still one more thing that has the that's twenty seconds that's been revised or no?
Sorry, which calendar are you looking at?
I'm sorry, the Pinelands calendar. Um. That we've reflected the snow day from the nineteen.
Yes.
Whenever we reflected the day from the twenty-second. I'm sorry, this is the twenty-second. I'm so sorry. I wrote something weird down.
It's okay.
Never mind.
So we only had the one snow day that we had to add.
Yeah.
No, we've only had one.
We had the late, the the delay.
Late opening. Yeah, we don't need to make that day up.
No, I knew that. I just wrote it down differently. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on items? Eight A through eight G?
Okay.
Amanda, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. McVeigh?
Yes.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnike?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to items nine. Personnel. I ask for a motion to approve personnel items nine A through nine O as recommended by the superintendent.
Snow made.
Thank you, Betty Ann. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. Any questions on items nine A through nine O? There are no questions. Amanda, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, but I must have seen from nine L.
Ms. Johnson?
Nine D, no. The rest, yes.
Abstention noted. I'm sorry, you're no voted. No vote is noted. Uh, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. McVeigh?
Yes.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnike?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten. I asked, I asked for a motion to approve the Hibb item ten A as recommended by the superintendent.
Motion.
Any questions? On item ten A? Amanda, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt, you need abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ms. Johnson, you would also need to abstain.
Yes, I will abstain.
Abstention noted. And Mr. Hewitt, your abstention is noted. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. McVeigh?
Uh, yes, abstain on item number five.
Noted. Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnike?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, Policies and Procedures. I ask for a motion to approve Policies and Procedures Items eleven A through eleven B as recommended by the superintendent.
Motion.
Very good. Any questions on those items? There being none, Amanda, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
We're on eleven, right?
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. McVeigh?
Yes.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnike?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Amanda. Moving on to section twelve, Operations. I ask for a motion to approve Operations. Twelve A through twelve C as recommended by the superintendent.
So made.
Thank you, Betty Ann. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Any questions on those items?
Can you further explain C and why that's needed?
It's the jointure. It's, we go into a jointure if there's runs that we can't cover. So if there's like an out-of-district placement, we would get it cheaper through the jointure. Okay, yeah, thanks. It's just, and it's preapproving that. So we we don't necessarily have or using them, but in case we have to.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on items twelve A through twelve C? Seeing none, Amanda, roll call vote, please. Surely.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. McVeigh?
Yes.
Ms. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnike?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving into item thirteen, Report of our Board Secretary Business Administrator. I ask for a motion to approve the Board. Greater Report, Items Twelve A through Twelve I.
Motion.
Second.
Any other, uh, any questions from the floor? You seem to be catching up, Amanda.
I know I can get in the hang of the program.
Yes.
Roll call vote, please, Amanda.
Ms. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Okay. Thirteen, C, D, and E, I'm going to abstain because I don't feel comfortable certifying stuff from November. Uh, so thirteen, A, B, F, G, H, yes.
Okay, hold on one second. So thirteen, eh, just tell me the ones, yes. A?
B, F as in Frank, G as in George, H as in Henry, yes. Thirteen. I. One, no. Two, yes. Three, abstain.
Okay. So thirteen, I, one, no, two, yes, three abstain.
Correct.
What about? C, D?
D and E, she said she abstained.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part. So thirteen, C, D, and E, you're abstaining.
Correct.
All right, noted. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. McVeigh?
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Dalio?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnike?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That little side discussion was about uh, section fourteen informational items. So monthly attendance, monthly discipline, security drills, personnel change and ARP, Safe Return Update.
Has to be updated once a year.
So there's just just information that's things that are taking place that a vote is not required on.
It's information. It doesn't really, okay. Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, very good. Okay, moving on to item fifteen, Residence Forum, General Topics. Board Policy Number Zero One Six Seven encourages community participation in every meeting. However, the board requests that public, that the public respect a reasonable time limit when commenting on any topic. Is there anyone from the floor for any topic? Kelly?
Question. Was there a? Approval, a vote on the administrative building? On it being knocked down and being rebuilt?
Okay, when we close the floor, we'll answer the question.
May I have to still finish that?
This is the second part?
Yeah.
Go. I know, it's hard, right? You can't do this at home.
Yes, I can. I get to make fun of you when I'm at home. You're rude too, so you just shut up. Anyway.
Ma'am, please.
Nobody else is sitting here talking.
Ma'am, please, ma'am.
Um, my other question, my other thing is, isn't it really upsets me as a parent, and I know other parents feel the same way. Is when money is raised by the parents and by businesses. Why are they not being acknowledged? Instead, you're all acknowledging. And the school is acknowledging that they did it when it wasn't you particularly who did it. It was the businesses out there that helped by donations. It's parents that go out there and make things happen, including like all the sports. Everybody's always raising money, all the parents. For and all these coaches are trying to get all this money together constantly to raise money for sports equipment. How come we don't have money for that, but we have money for an administrative building? The kids are supposed to come first. You as board members took the oath stating. That you're here for our kids. Administrative building is not for our children.
Thank you. Anyone else from the floor?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Bonnike, for trying to keep this positive. Um, it's very appreciated.
Bring my confetti shooter.
And I also didn't speak about the students, the appreciation for the thespian group and. Do have a lot of talented students here. Really appreciate that presentation tonight. Um, and the last thing I'll say on a general topic is this board, I would encourage you to take a look at Policy Fifty Seven Fifty Six. Many boards have removed that policy from their policy book as it is not. Uh, based in law and it's no longer mandated or it never was mandated. So I just encourage the board to do the same. It could be very divisive. It puts parents. Against teachers and teachers against students. So I encourage you to take a look at that. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, Chuck Miller, one eleven Division Street, Eagleswood. Uh, I wanted to, once again, just thank you for the time of the presentation and wanted to acknowledge one other person. Uh, who makes a lot of this possible for us, which I neglected to mention earlier, is our supervisor, Mr. Matt Maleski. Who works tirelessly with us and deals with us. who works tirelessly with us and deals with us on a lot of days. So just wanted to thank our supervisor, Matt, while he was still here. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else from the floor? Any topic? Once? The floor's still open, Kelly. We said when the floor closes. Silly. Twice. Three times closed. So.
Would you like me to answer those questions?
Um, so. Well, I have a question to the question. Can I ask a question to the question? You can answer about the, the admin building, when that was, uh, uh, approved? How long ago? Okay, so that's, that should be a moot point. But I'm gonna say this in the nicest way. So when you raised the topic of sports teams, other clubs raising funds and make charges or allegations that those funds aren't being used, or specifically what club? What was raised? What was it raised for? I want to specific, the board should get a, have a specific, I don't know what that is. Who, who specifically did not use the funds properly? Are you saying someone used the funds improperly? So they did their own individual fundraising to do things beyond what this, the, the district provides? At what point have we not? For which event? For what group? Which group? Which group? We'll go back and look at that. I, 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 I don't know what that is.
Budget fees for everything that is needed. If there's things that are above and beyond, those are the things that are fundraised for. But if there's equipment that is needed for the sport, that is not, that's paid for by the district. Okay, so can you tell me the example then? Okay.
Perfect.
Can you email me? Or call me?
But if there's any other needs that a coach needs, they would come to the board to ask for that. But if, if they're doing their own separate fundraising.
A lot of times they want things above and beyond.
But I, but I don't think they're coming us to, and again, forgive me for this comment, to pat them on the back for doing the fundraising. If they say, hey, we need your assistance. I think, I think we do that on a constant basis. We thank the parents. We, sure. Okay.
Anything else?
Um, I'm gonna send you an email, Ms. Raver. Okay, that's a lot to answer. So I'll get to it, uh, tomorrow at some point, collaborate and get that to you. You did print legibly, didn't you? Super.
Will the rest of the board be CC'd on that? So we know what? So we're all informed on everything? Just like what is out there?
Be a quorum.
Well, eh, I don't have a problem with information being pushed out. I would just suggest that to be very careful not to reply.
Yeah, I'm just asking, just like, so then I know.
Yeah, just don't respond back. Then you're gonna have a discussion going on.
No, absolutely. That, that, those answers will be shared, but there's no comment on them.
Yeah.
Um, or reply all. If you have to ask a question, you can certainly ask me a question and I'll follow up with it.
Yes.
So. Hopefully I cover all those points. So that closes. What's that?
I said I hate reply all, I get it.
Yeah. It's right there. Um, so residence forum is closed. Going to board forum, we're getting close to the end of our meeting. Item sixteen. So board forum, allow me, I'm gonna start right from my right. Stephanie?
I know I, we were sworn in on January third, but I just wanted to thank the voters for voting for me and for my family for supporting me. Um, it hasn't been a very easy twenty-three days or whatever. Um, I hope it gets a little better, but I'm here for the community. I'm here for the school regardless of the information that I'm not given. Um, but I will persist in voting the way that I feel and what is best for the taxpayers in the community and the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Morton?
Thank you.
What's up?
Um, thank you again, um, for the board, um, recognition. Very nice. Thank you. It truly is an honor. Unbelievable, the thespians. That was just fantastic. Congratulations to all of you. Um, just one thing I'd like to add as far as the thespians, I think I brought this up last year too, and maybe the year before. In the midst of, um, you know, however I volunteer my time, that parent group, the parent group that puts the word out that they need candy bars to sell so they can support the scholarships for the seniors that are graduating, et cetera. I mean, the ball goes out and I can't even tell you the number of parents that, you know, I can do this, I can get that, I'll pick up a case of water, I'll pick up a box of candy bars. Um, they are just absolutely amazing and, you know, kudos to all of them and thank you. Um, cause it's, um, my children that you're supporting as well. Um, congratulations for all the winter sports. Congratulations to the National Honor Society inductees. Um, and also thank you to the latest, uh, scholarship. The businesses that, the latest round of scholarships that have been donated to our graduating class. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Guess who's next, Johanna? Well, you're next. Do you not see where you're sitting?
Um, I want to follow up with Ms. Martin. I completely agree. Congratulations to the thespians. I've seen it. My friends are a thus, like they're part of it. It is a toll. It's something that I think on paper looks really good. And it looks good in general. That sounds harsh to say. It's a great thing and I'm very happy to have friends that are in it. I'm happy to see them so excited and get the recognition that they deserve. And it's also as, I'm sorry, I don't know. You, I don't, I don't know you, I'm sorry. But that like truly was an empowering moment where it finds a place for people and I hope that the school, and I know that this school has other opportunities, not only with drama, but even if it's an academic person that's suited in these ways to have an outlet for them, something that they can be proud of, something that's prideful to them. And I know that I see that in my friends. I see that in a lot of students that I see and I represent. And I'm just happy to be here and I congratulate everybody. Um, other than that, I think I have nothing else.
Thank you, Johanna. Ms. Betty?
Sir. Um, I wanted to say that I'm, I'm excited about the OCC satellite location thing. I think that's very cool. I, I'm, I'm impressed. Um, and the Twilight program is a very good thing. I'm, I'm grateful that we have, um, a place like that because it's definitely necessary. Not everybody does the nine to five, that's real. Um, of course, the thespians, um, we have a lot of talent in this district, no doubt. I mean, the kids are amazing and, um, what Ms. DeBella said, I mean, I've seen kids that, that just benefited so much from, well, and any student that's involved in anything is gonna do, do better because it'll help them with their academics. It'll help them with their social. It's a wonderful thing and the program does that in such a great way. But what I mostly want to say is that, um, is that it truly, is that, um, a- as an educator and as a person who is coached, I know for a fact that you can have a lot of talent, but it takes the right people to bring out the best in the students. And I want to give a shout out to Chuck Miller and to Bart DeFrancia and to Mama Dee for, and to all of the thespian people because what they do is magic. And, um, I'd just like to say that behind every, um, successful student stands a surprised coach. Thank you all for what you do for us.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. Mr. Hewitt?
I first just like to thank, uh, my fellow board members and the administration for answering all of my many questions that I have and I appreciate that. Um, I'd like to thank the members of the public for being here tonight and for, uh, asking us questions and, and sharing. We, we truly appreciate your input. Thank you very much. Um, and to piggyback off what everyone else has said. Um, I really appreciate the work of our performing arts department here. Uh, I know as a person, for me, I was involved in the performing arts department back in the nineteen hundreds along with Mr. DeFrancia and Mr. Miller. And, uh, the experiences I had in that department made me part of the person that I am today. And it's a really tremendous thing and I don't think we should ever take for granted the, the teachers, the coaches, uh, the people who influence our kids positively. And, uh, it's really important and they carry a great weight. And we really appreciate everything that you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Mrs. McVeigh?
Thank you. Um, I would also like to say that I'm excited to hear that the, uh, Ocean County will be offering classes here at Pine Lands. I know that's something that used to be done way back in the day in the nineteen hundreds. Um, and I want to thank Dr. McCulley for making that happen. It's not just something that happens by itself. Um, and I would, I appreciate all the hard work she does along with, uh, Ms. Miller. I know how difficult this job can be and I want you both to know how much I appreciate everything you do. Um, I'd like to thank again all the individuals who came forward to the open board seat. Um, I've been on this board a while. We've filled a few seats like this in the past. And I can honestly say that this group was the best group that we've ever had to come forward. And like I said before, any one of them could have filled a seat, but I'm excited to welcome Ms. Martin on board. I'd also like to perhaps request, uh, at our next meeting, if, if time will allow, some training in board decorum and review the policies that we have, uh, to govern board member behavior. I'd like to remind my fellow board members that we have a student sitting on our board and many times there are students in the audience and we need to behave at a very high level, treat each other with respect and act like adults. Um, that's the least that we can do when we are, um, representing a high school and representing the best of what we have and that's our students. Um, I'd also like to thank the, um, theater presentation, uh, that is as much fun as I've had at a board meeting in a really long time and it's just so much fun to be a part of that. Even having the chance to hand out those medals, I could feel the youthful enthusiasm from those students. Um, might give me a couple extra years, who knows? Um, but, um, I'm, I've always supported the theater program. I always hold it up as our shining star. Um, along with several other things we do well here at Pine Lands, youth services, athletics, whatever the case may be. But not only are they changing lives and, and offering our community these amazing, amazing shows that they get to see. Um, they do it at such an excellent level. And even when we lost Mr. Miller for a little while, which was just a big mistake, I would venture to say that that school district is blessed to have had you for the little bit of time they had you. And I am sure their program is better off for it, but we're so glad to have you back and you're not going anywhere under my watch. Um, but anyhow, um, it's, it's just the excellence we all should aspire to be. It is really an example here at Pine Lands of what can be done when you work hard and you care about kids. So thank you immensely. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. McVeigh. Mr. D'Alio?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bonniki. Being one of the last ones, you know, it's, I just keep on repeating on what everyone's already said.
That should make it easy then for you.
It should be simple and short and sweet, right? So that's not gonna happen. Um, but I want to thank, uh, the public who did attend tonight. I really appreciate seeing your faces here. Um, again, I wanna, I wanna thank Mr. Miller and DeFrancia on what you do, what you mean to our schools. The presentation, I don't think we've ever had a presentation to the board like that before. And it was stellar. It was so on point and I want to thank you for your time that you invest in our kids. Um, I would like, it was brought up, I would like to see some more discussion. Uh, the president can maybe have a discussion, um, at a future agenda item that we can talk about, uh, as far as live streaming, not live streaming. Uh, if anything, having a copy readily available to the public if they want to view it. Um, I think that's important discussion to have. Uh, I'd also like to thank Crystal Martin, this new, new board member here. Congratulations. I'm sure you'll do, you'll, you'll do great things here. Um, and other than that, the only thing is I would like to see our two districts. We don't look at the, the districts as separate entities. We look at the, the districts as a community. And I would like, I would hope that one day both districts can work together and collaborate. Um, what I saw last week at a board meeting was disheartening. And, um, I hate to see that. I'm getting tired of it. There's no need for it. We should all be working together for the students and hopefully we can make that happen for our students. And other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. D'Alio. Okay, so I'll finish this lovely evening off with, uh, usually meetings don't take this long, but I love being that long with the, uh, uh, the presentation from, from Chuck and group. That was just fantastic. It, it really was. Um, so I want to just talk to our group again. Any topic. So about trust and transparency and, and working together. You know, I'm gonna tell you, one of the things, but off the bat, you ask me a question, you're gonna get an answer. You don't like it, you don't like it. It is what it is. But you ask me a question in any form, public, private or not, I'm gonna give you an answer. You cannot accuse me of ever hiding something.
I proceed.
That'll be enough of you.
Okay.
You cannot ever accuse me of hiding something. So I came across this open group chat about being a new board member. And it just talks about how the superintendent and current board don't like me. I don't know how you make that dis, dis, how, how you come to that end.
Have you not?
Well, how about the cur? Well.
Easy out there. Come on now.
This is, this is my floor. Um, being denied an introduction meeting? Eleven sixteen twenty-three. The board member received your welcome and direction and how to follow through on the necessary things and to spew that into the public and chatter. Again, that just creates negativity and I want the negativity to end. You know, we've, we've got, you know, uh, you know, this conflict of board. Uh, council, you know the board, you know, you know who the council was coming onto the board. And, and this other piece, this here's a direct lie.
Okay.
This, this, the president says I am to use the superintendent's proper title and not call her by her first name. My light scolding was because you called her Missy. And that was direct disrespect. Okay, I want to respect you and it's hard to. It's hard. I'm, you, we've never met. I could never pick you out of a lineup. I don't know who you are. I don't. And you, hold on, and you don't know me? Do you?
No.
You don't. So I just, I just want to say this.
Last couple of weeks and.
You, you, what, what, what you've seen is because of your own regard or disregard for decorum and, uh, human decency.
But what is this have to do?
It's my floor.
Why is this in public though? You could lecture me and with.
Cause all of this was in public.
No, it wasn't. It was on the NJ School Board Association for advice.
Group chat.
No, it wasn't. It's for New Jersey School Board Association.
You don't know me, right?
Telling me I need to CC everybody.
You don't know me? I wonder how this gets out.
Cause her husband stole them.
I don't care.
He went around and took all of them and that's my First Amendment right for freedom of speech and that's election.
I allow. So freedom of speech is great, but let me tell you something.
So I'm allowed to put them.
Through my name, that's disgusting.
Really, you're the one who resigned. You're the one who resigned because it was too tough for you and now all of a sudden the school's doing good and you're coming back in to be voted. Shame on you for being president.
This, Mr. President, Ms., Ms. Ashton, I, I, I really do believe.
But instead, you're getting, you're, never mind.
I really do believe.
This is ridiculous. If you want to lecture me, then lecture me in private. You don't have to do it in public to see how petty and immature you are.
Stephanie, please.
That'll be enough.
Immature.
Stephanie stops.
I'm trying to do what I'm supposed to do by asking questions of Ms. Miller.
The board forum is over. I'm going to ask for a, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You never once reached out to introduce yourself. You never once reached out to introduce yourself. None of the boards did. None of the board members did. Oh, let's, let's do it. Let's, everybody's welcome to stay if you.